Thank you. Good afternoon, I'd like to call the Higher Education Committee jointly with the Committee on Labor to order. Today is February 10th, we are in room 229, our three o'clock agenda item. Let me start with saying that this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. And we'll cover the 2:00 PM joint hearing on the Committee on Higher Education and Labor, Culture and the Arts, and the single HRE hearing. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committees will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Tuesday, February 15th at 3:00 PM in room 229. And a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. For testifiers participating remotely, your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. Testifiers will be limited to one minute each. At the end of the one minute, the audio will be automatically muted. I'll be reading a list of individuals who submitted a testimony for each measure. We apologize if the closed caption doesn't accurately transcribe the names. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to the legislature's website. You will find a link on the status page for the measure. If there are temporary glitches during your turn to testify, we may have to move to the next person due to time constraints. We appreciate your understanding and remind you that the committee has your written testimony. And let's see, for the Higher Education Committee, I have to my right the Vice Chair, Senator Michelle Kidani, and I don't see anybody on Zoom, oh, and Senator Favella also here, and I'm sure others will join us. And for the Labor Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, on behalf of the Labor Culture and the Arts, so I have my Vice Chair, Senator Yehara, as well as Senator Chang and Favella.
Okay, so we'll start off with Senate Bill 3267 relating to the Research Corporation of the University of Hawaii. This allows the University of Hawaii to enter into contracts with the Research Corporation of the University of Hawaii for the purposes of supporting or facilitating sponsored research and training activities, or for advancing innovation and entrepreneurship in the state using funds appropriated by the legislature. Requires the university to consult with employee unions to review conforming positions with exceptions to collective bargaining for the purposes of employment personnel. First up to testify via Zoom is Vasilis Saramos from the University of Hawaii.
We definitely chair Kim, Chair Taniguchi. Thank you for having us. We're standing by our testimony, offering comments for Senate Bill 3267.
Thank you very much. We have also Lenny Govea from RCUH.
Good afternoon. Sorry, we had a little bit of technical difficulty, so I was a bit late in here, but good afternoon, Chair Kim. I stand on my written testimony that was submitted. Thank you folks for allowing me to submit testimony.
Thank you. We have also Jiyoung Kim, an individual here. Are you on?
Not present, Chair.
Not present? That is all the testifiers via Zoom. We do have a number of, one from Maui Bird Recovery Project in opposition, and let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and nine individuals in opposition. Is there any questions, members? Okay, I do have questions. So Vasilis, from your part, as far as the University of Hawaii and your work with RCUH, would you like to give the members a little bit more background?
So the university uses RCUH for several reasons. One is for sponsored research extramural funds, and we're using RCUH's services for human resources and procurement because they're exempt from procurement and collective bargaining. RCUH has been invaluable for us in executing our extramural funding research, and we value their services. RCUH also serves the university by allowing UH to service order intramural funds in support for our sponsored research, and that has been also a paramount help for the university, and it has been very successful over the last five, six decades. There are also other programs within RCUH and revolving accounts that also serve the research enterprise of UH.
So on the revolving accounts, how is that managed?
The revolving accounts are managed by the campuses. And the revolving accounts primarily, and I don't have the numbers in front of me because they do not run out of my office, primarily serve the research enterprise of the university, I want to say. And again, at least that's the ones I am familiar with. The way they're managed is they are created by the unit approved by the chancellor or their designee of the campus. Also goes to RCUH's for review and approval per our administrative procedure. And then every year those are being renewed, and they go through a review for compliance with our purpose.
Thank you. Lenny, for the state positions and state projects, how does RCUH go about determining which positions get put together and get funded, and which programs get implemented? Because we have been told that these circumvent the legislative process, it circumvents the civil service and so forth.
Well, as far as the individuals who get hired for these projects, as I indicated in our opposition, we have a policy in place already that gets screened by the UHOHR, and also Vasilis is involved in that process. In the event that they determine that position is questionable, Vasilis will look at it and decide whether or not he believes it's appropriate to process. So that's the attachment B review process that we've identified. I think that the current processes are working effectively, and I, to my knowledge, there isn't a problem with those hirings, you know? I don't think it's necessary for us to change the language in the statute because we already work with the unions, and I personally haven't been notified that they have any problems right now. And, but I'm willing to sit down with them, with Vasilis, and, you know, go through that process. But it really is more of a UH evaluation that's done before it comes to us. Unless there's something glaring for us to decide, otherwise we go with what Vasilis decides and the university decides. So I can, yeah.
Let me just ask this question first. So how many state positions, how many positions do you have that are working on actual state projects? And technically could have been a state worker? Like you have, you have, you have positions that DLNR, you have positions in a number of areas and projects in which perhaps the legislature didn't fund, or where you are then hiring people to work in those areas.
So that's kind of a difficult question, but in a nutshell, we hire people for projects, so it's not someone that's going to come on board and stay with the state position for a long time. It's paid mostly by extramural funding, and that funding can, well, basically the funding goes along with the agreement, and whatever the terms and conditions of the agreement are, those individuals are hired in accordance with that. So typically they're a much shorter time period. And once that period ends and the contract is completed, then those people move on. So it isn't like a typical state position that you would have somebody hired and stay on for, you know, a long period, you know, three years and then get vested and follow the rules under the unions. So it is a different situation. It was pretty much created for that very purpose of hiring and firing as necessary for research projects.
So how long has the longest contract been?
Okay, so we have a core staff, and we have researchers that hire staff to support their projects. So that's a two different, two different categories. So our core staff is approximately 35 to 40 people on average. Those, some people stay here long. I think the longest is approximately 30 years you have one person. But for most of the projects, it's anywhere from, you know, a few months to a few years. I don't know exactly how long, who's the longest in the, that support projects, that I couldn't answer for you right now. But it's typically not forever.
Okay, I'm just trying to get an idea when you say that these positions and these projects are short-term because many of them do roll over and some of them have lasted for a while. And so, you know, we don't have an accounting. Do you guys report this? Is there anything where that report comes to the legislature?
We, I think currently we don't report by position, but we could certainly give you that if you wanted to. We could pull that information.
Well, you can see what the concerns are by the, by the legislature and by the Ways and Means and Fin Committee as far as these positions and whether or not they circumvent the legislative process.
I understand the concerns, but I just don't think that there's evidence of that happening. So, you know, we are, as promised to you in the other hearings that we've had, we're looking at our processes and working with UH carefully to look at these things to make sure that we're not violating any of that, and that's part of an ongoing process that we're working on. So, and I respectfully submit that, you know, we're doing our job and we're looking at it, and I do not see any kind of significant problem in any of these areas. There may be onesies or twosies that we're gonna fix, but it's my opinion that it isn't a significant problem by any means, and we would be more than happy, like I said, and again, in my opposition, we're not opposed to working with unions at all and making sure that we comply and, and do what's, you know, do what the right thing is. So that, that's my position. Vasilis has been here longer than me, so he may have a little bit more to add to that. But, you know, I believe that what we have is working, and it's working quite effectively.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I guess as the Labor Chair, I'm concerned about the consultation stuff, and I guess there's no consultation process currently, right?
Well, there isn't, and to my knowledge, there isn't any timed consultation process, but the process is, we have an internal process on the UH RCUH side, but if the union has an issue, we, you know, they could always raise the issue and come in and we meet to discuss it. I'm not sure, again, no one has come to me to talk about any of this, but I know in the past there have been meetings with different people at UH and RCUH on the issue. I do plan on hopefully reaching out to the union shortly to, as part of this process that we're going through during our evaluation, to make sure that we have communication, but I have not completed that yet personally.
Right, and so I guess the current process is Vasilis will kind of make a determination, and so, Vasilis, have you ever consulted, have you ever consulted with the unions at all?
I have not gone through a formal consultation with the unions. I think my predecessor had started that chair. There are two types of positions here that we're talking about. One is the ones on extramural funds. These are limited term appointments, and they're appointments that they last as long as the period of performance of the ground and contract. And secondly, there are RCUH positions on intramural funds in support of the research enterprise and of course of other projects within the university. And from my past discussions with my predecessor, I understand that the unions were concerned about those positions, not the ones on extramural funds. I know that Dr. Gaines before me had started some type of discussion with the union, but that was never completed. So I have reached out to HGA to see whether we can reboot that discussion. So as Lenny said, and I truly believe I, we're quite open to do a fair analysis of the process. It's not perfect, but I think we can do better, especially for the intramural accounts.
Thank you.
Thank you, members. Any other questions? Yes, Senator Favella.
It's gonna be, you know, either one of them. So when you guys talk about short-term and job to job, so let's just say I started, I started on a project, and I had a, had a one-year contract. How often do you have the same person has been rehired in doing multiple contracts on short period of time or companies? Because I hear this short-term all the time to get around procurement, union, and other jobs around the state and even with the university. How much of a person like me, if I went there and I had multiple, do anybody that you guys know of that is listed that had multiple extensions of their contract after the two or term that had ended?
Senator, I can, I can answer that. You're absolutely correct. That happens in contracts that they renew because there are contracts that they go beyond two and three years. On an average, when I looked for our extramural funds, which are contracts two to three years, and RCUH employee has a lifetime of six to seven years. So for our extramural funds, truly, it is not, it is limited term appointment. Now, on our intramural funds, I have not looked into that, Senator, because, you know, I, I, I've never looked, it's intramural, so I never, I never looked on those, but as Lenny said, we can work and get your number. The average time of an employee on these intramural accounts.
So six, six to seven years, is that considered to be short-term? Is that what you say?
Yes, sir. It is considered to be a short-term because after five, six years, a person like that moves to another state to do the similar amount of work or on research on a different project in a different state. So five, six years, it is considered short-term for us, yes.
Yeah, so what, what, I guess the senators were saying earlier, if they're doing a job or, or scope of a job similar to DLNR or any of those other fields, six to seven years you vested in the union, or you vested in the state. And then, you know, if you do move on, you can move on within the state with having this kind of years. But I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking that maybe that's not the scope of what you guys doing going around.
These are actually really good questions, Senator. And I want to make a differentiation on our extramural funds. Probably the employee that is going to live in five or six years is going to go to a different state. So if I were that type of employee, it would be easier, more preferable if I had a portable retirement system, and I would move my retirement to a different job in a different state. Now, as you said, if you have somebody that moves from a state job to another state job, then that wouldn't be beneficial. So these are very valid questions, and this is something that, you know, we were also thinking, and these are some of the issues that we would like to discuss with HGA as well.
Thank you, Chair.
One last question. So how do you, how do you square off the XMBA program? When this program has been going on for decades, and it continues to go on, and I still don't understand how RCUH can be running a degree program when that's the job of the University of Hawaii?
Oh, Senator, we are working on that as we speak. So I think that President Lasman and Dr. Seramos have a good grip on that, and they're working on it, and we are standing by to move as appropriate.
So Vasilis, what is the status of that, please?
I don't want to put words in the president's mouth, but I think he's firm in his commitment that by the fall, he's going to have some type of agreement or some type of a plan. Again, I don't want to put words on David's mouth, but that's what I think I have sure him say.
But those things, those actions wouldn't have been occurring if it wasn't for this kind of legislation or the concerns that we've raised and put some kind of timeline on it, right?
I suppose, I suppose you're correct.
Thank you. Senator Kidani.
Thank you, Vasilis. I'm not sure I'm following exactly what you said. So if we have employees that go from contract to contract that the state didn't hire, but were through contracts, are you saying that they could possibly retire and get benefits from the state because they served long enough?
Actually, if there are RCUH employees, they cannot get benefits from the state. If they are, and we do have state employees on contracts, if they are state employees and they have been vested, then yes, they can get retirement and medical benefits from the state.
I guess I'm still not following why they would be on contract for that many years to be vested, Senator.
Again, RCUH employees do not get any state retirement or medical benefits.
If I may, I think, this is Lenny, I think I have an example. And if you have an engineer working on a project and they have an expertise in a certain area, and there's a contract that comes from the federal government to do a particular project, and let's say that project is for three years, that person is hired by that principal investigator to come and do that work, and at the end of that contract, if there's no extension or whatnot, another, that same researcher, same PI, or another PI could get another award and have work that that engineer has expertise in, and they could pick them up on a separate, another contract. So that's kind of typical, that does happen often, and it gets very complicated. But, you know, some, some of these researchers that are hired under RCUH may have the same PI or different PIs, but their area of expertise is the same, and they're hired on different contracts. So it totally depends on the extramural award and the contractual terms. So some people may be around UH working for RCUH for, let's say, 10 years, but they could be working on three different projects for, you know, different time periods, same PI or different PIs. It gets kind of complicated, but it really is, the point of having this ability to hire and fire quickly is really important and tantamount to researchers being allowed to bring people on board. What you folks are talking about is somebody intentionally using the state's statutes to circumvent and, you know, get hired for a long period of time, but circumvent the law. And I don't think there's too many, I don't personally know of too many instances like that. I'm sure, you know, in this day and age, there's always one or two people who do things differently from others and take advantage of situations, but I don't see that being a significant problem. And I think the most, the majority of people are doing it the right way and using it for what it's worth. And we do have trained people at RCUH that if we see something going on, we will bring it to the attention of UH and question it. You know, we have Nelson Sakamoto, who has been here for 30 years. He's a person I was talking about that we've had the longest, so can't pull too much past him with that kind of thing. So he does track it, and there is good communication between UH and RCUH for those issues.
Thank you.
But you do have dual employment, and, and there's been times when, like you had Haida, and Haida was using RCUH as a pass too, so that the executive director of Haida, who was retired from, or not retired from the state, who wanted to collect dual, dual pensions and went through RCUH to do that. I mean, there are many incidents that have come up in the past, how they've utilized your exemptions to get around certain state laws. Okay.
No, no, that may be true, Senator. I totally understand what you're saying. But like I, I've given you my commitment that we're working closely with UH to evaluate all these different areas. And you're talking about, I mean, we're looking at the whole organization and everything that we've done and we've been doing. So, you know, it takes a lot of our time, you know, I know we're committed to looking at everything, and, you know, we're never going to be perfect, no matter what we do, we can't be perfect and make sure that we catch everything. But we're going to do our best to fix what needs to be fixed and keep the researchers moving. That's the most important thing, is to keep them moving and giving them what they need to get the job done quickly and efficiently.
Thank you very much, and we certainly want to help you do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, members, any other questions? If not, we're going to, to decision-making. We'll call back to order the Joint Committee, but the Committee on Higher Education and Committee on Labor, Culture and the Arts. Decision-making, we discuss, the recommendation is to amend Senate Bill 3267. We want to amend the language to say that the consultation with the unions will occur according to the state programs and state positions, and that language in the, in the bill to ensure that the eradication of invasive species contracts would be able to be continued on, and that we would defect the date. Any discussion, members? Hearing no discussion, Chair votes aye, and Vice Chair?
The Committee on Higher Education, recommendation is pass up Senate Bill 3267. Senator Kim votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Keith Agarwal. Keith Agarwal, excused. Senator Wakai?
Yes.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
That's just adopted, Chair.
Thank you.
Same recommendation for the Committee on Labor and Culture and the Arts, Senator Yehara.
We're voting on the recommendations as just stated for Senate Bill 3267 to pass with amendments. Chair Taniguchi?
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Kyo Ho Kalale is excused, Senator Favella?
Aye.
Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourning the Joint Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back to order, the Committee on Higher Education, we have two measures to take up. The Labor Committee again, thank you. Okay. So we are on our 3:00 PM agenda for higher education only. Our first item on the, on the agenda is Senate Bill 3374. This relates to the University of Hawaii Community Colleges. It appropriates funds for the University of Hawaii Workforce Development Program for Administration, Training, Positions, and Student Support. Our first, we testifying is Craig Kury for Budget and Finance. Is Craig here? Not here. Tammy Oyadomori Chun testifying for the University of Hawaii in support.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani, and members of the committee. I'm Tammy Chun from the University of Hawaii Community Colleges, serving I'm Tammy Chun from the University of Hawaii Community Colleges, serving as the Associate Vice President for Academic Affairs. I'm going to stand in my written testimony and thank the committee for the opportunity to share more about the workforce development initiatives of the community colleges as stated in the written testimony. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We also have Dr. Gwen Williams in support and Susan Jarolowski, I hope I said that correct, with comments. I don't, we don't have anyone else that has signed up to testify. Members, are there any questions for Tammy regarding this measure? Hearing none. Thank you very much. We will move on to our next item. Senate Bill 3269 relating to academic tenure at the University of Hawaii. This outlines tenure requirements and criteria for tenure track faculty. Requires a minimum of at least one performance review every five years for tenured and tenure track faculty. Requires a minimum of at least one performance review every three years for administrative, professional, and technical and non-tenureable employees. Establish a minimum faculty categories for all campuses establishes a C classification for instructors at the community college. We do have a proposed CD one. I do want to, before I start taking the testifiers, and we do have quite a few members that make it clear that there was no intention of dismantling tenure on this. This bill took all of the recommendations that was made by the Board of Regents PIG, which is the permitted interaction group. And whether it was adopted or referred to committee, the report is still the result of the Board of Regents Action. Senate Bill 3269 incorporated all the recommendation, even those that I personally did not agree with. And that is the reason why we have the proposed S B one. There were four members of the Board of Regents on this committee. They did meet from March through, March through August of 2021. They met 11 times and their final report was supported by eight of the nine members of the PIG. With UPa being the lone opposition. And I do bring this up because I feel that there's really no place for fear and scare tactics that is being put out. And I, there was a letter that was sent out by UPa saying that the bill is an attempt by Senator Donna Mercado Kim, Chair of the Senate Committee on Higher Education, to interject the legislature into the constitutionality established role of the U H Board of Regents by taking aware the exclusive jurisdiction over the internal structure, management, and operation of the U H, thereby granting themselves as the governing body of the Board of Regents. Now, this measure was again proposed by the Board of Regents Permitted Interaction Group. And with that, I will proceed to public testimony, starting with David Lasner. Testifying for the University of Hawaii, I think Deborah, Deborah Halbert is here. Good afternoon, Deborah. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Senator Kim, Vice Chair Kidani and the committee. I am here representing President Lasner, who is unavailable. My name is Deborah Halbert. I'm the Associate Vice President for Academic Programs and Policy for the University of Hawaii System. The University of Hawaii stands in its written testimony in strong opposition to S B 2369 S D one. And I'm happy to answer any questions when we have the time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Deborah. Next up is Christian Fern, testifying for the University of Hawaii Professional Assembly.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Christian Fern, Executive Director of U H P A. We want to stand on our written testimony. We'd like to underscore a few points. This bill does have state constitutional statutory and collective bargaining issues. It's based on misleading information and there is overwhelming opposition to it. As a member of the Permitted Interaction Group or PIG, the findings included my dissenting opinion, which wasn't, which was ignored. The bill also indicates that the Regents adopted the PIGs. And as you mentioned, they actually voted not to act on it. There is a senior SCR tenure task force report that is available. That's been disregarded. There's a lot of information in there that needs to be reviewed and taken into account. I will be available to answer any questions or concerns. I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Next is Jan Sullivan, former Board of Regents member. And I believe Chair of, of the Permitted Interactive Group.
Thank you. I stand on my written testimony and I can only summarize it here. I served on the board for 10 years until June of last year. I firmly believe there is no institution more important to the future of our state. One of my highest priorities was ensuring that higher education would remain affordable and accessible to our residents. So when the board formed this tenure task group, I agreed to take on what I knew would be an extremely unpopular topic. Because I know the quality of education and affordability for residents tomorrow are impacted by the decisions we make today. Contrary to the loud sensational objections you may have heard, the recommendations from our diverse task group did not propose to kill tenure. We in fact proposed dead policy to consider strategic needs and priorities and grant you tenure to ensure a fair and balanced post tenure review process and to modernize tenure classifications to be consistent with peer institutions to retain tenure for instructional research and library faculty members. This bill has incorporated our recommendations and for that reason, I support the bill.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Ben Kudo, Member of the Board of Regents.
Good afternoon, Chair Kim. The, I was the Chair of the Board of Regents at the time the Tenure Permitted Interaction Group was formed. Former Regent Jan Sullivan. The present bill before us, Senate Bill 3269, generally follows the recommendations of the PIG, which was voted by its members, which included both Regents and others in the administration, as well as Dean of Faculty, to support the recommendations made by the report of the Permitted Interaction Group. The Board of Regents voted not to take action on the report because the SCR 201 task group had not yet been formed. And that subsequently, that task group was formed. I was not part of it by Regent, now President Chair Randy Moore, with President Lazar and others on it. I did not participate in any of those proceedings. They very recently issued a task group report.
I'm sorry, your time has run out then. So just want to make a note that there was no one from the legislature that sat on the PIG or any of the boards. So with that, it's, our next testifier is Alena Shalabi. Alena, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alena Shalabi and I serve as the Advocacy Chair of the Graduate Student Organization at the University of Hawaii at Manoa, which serves more than 4,900 classified graduate students. We would like to stand on our written testimony in opposition of the bill. Graduate students are major stakeholders in any decision to alter the structure of tenure at U H. Graduate students' perspectives must be considered prior to making any recommendation reports or legislations. As the, and G S O, as the representative body of graduate students at U H, must be consulted on all issues related to academic freedom and tenure. Denying tenure and academic freedom it grants to one respective groups of scholars. And staff inherently undermines the academic freedom of all other faculty, staff, students, and workers at the university. Please do not cut away at one of the critical structures that supports students and faculty to do work diligently to fulfill its mission of this university and support the state of Hawaii. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I just want to make a note that there may be questions at the end of all the testifiers by members. So if you are able to stay around all the people that are testifying, we would appreciate that. Thank you. Jonathan Osorio?
Not present, Chair.
Not positions, Sharice Castillo.
Hello, good afternoon. Aloha, aloha, senators. Thank you for, for the time to speak. My name is Sharice Castillo and I'm speaking on behalf of the Hawaii Library Association. I'm the past president. We, our association have already submitted our formal written testimony in opposition to S B 3269. As our association was quite taken aback by the initial version of the act that claimed that U H system librarians should not be able to to have tenure because they are not instructional. We appreciate that the S D one shows that you have realized that librarians indeed are instructional faculty and are involved in issues that require protection of their academic freedom. So that they can provide for the intellectual freedom of their users and promote diverse collections. With that said, the H L A Board met yesterday and unanimously affirmed our position to S B 3269, our understand.
Thank you very much. Faith Seito?
Not present, Chair.
Thank you. Paul McKinney?
Good afternoon, Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani, and members of the committee. I'm Paul McKinney. I, I'm here to testify as an individual in opposition to Senate Bill 3269. 20 years ago this month, I started at U H as a specialist faculty in educational technology focused on distance education, which I think we all recognize is an important area. I'm credentialed to teach and research as my assignments require it. As a specialist, which the bill refers to as support faculty, my responsibilities change with the needs of the College of Education. My responsibilities have included curriculum, program design, program development, and professional development for other faculty, teaching, research, and service at all levels of the university. This bill makes specialists into second class faculty by precluding tenure. Under such conditions, I would not have remained at U H. The bill would erode our ability to recruit further qualified faculty. Please see my written testimony for examples of how specialists contribute to instructional productivity and why tenure is relevant to specialists. I'm available for further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Colwee?
Not present, Chair.
Andrew Werthermeyer?
So good afternoon, senators. My time is limited, so I help you review the three pages of written testimony I submitted. And again, I also speak for myself. This act is a direct threat, as well as the PIG and the way that it was carried out in a non-Pono way, is a direct threat to the autonomy of the U H Regents who are charged with enacting policies in consultation with U H administration, faculty senates on each campus, and our unions. Creating policies that meets the needs of our varied campuses is a difficult dance that takes time, transparency, and consultative processes. I'm sure that's why our state constitution, Article 10, Section 6, gives the Regents exclusive jurisdiction over governing this university. I see no good reason for the legislature to interject itself in this process. Hawaii needs a university where faculty, including librarians and extension faculty, can share their expertise, even if findings may be controversial. Democracy needs academic freedom and higher education to be protected like a free media in order to have a free flow of ideas. Beyond that, this may challenge our accreditation. I know my time is up, so I thank you for this time.
Thank you very much. Erica Molino?
Not present, Chair.
Ashley Maynard?
Good afternoon, and thank you for the chance to testify. I'm Ashley Maynard, speaking as an individual in strong opposition. The authors of this bill do not understand why the university functions. It functions because of tenured faculty and this bill destroys tenure. Anyone who understands why the university functions would not want to do that. Furthermore, neither the PIG report nor its resolution nor this bill provides any evidence that indicates in this bill. This bill is an attempt at intrusion where the legislature has no governing or supervisory authority. And claims of statewide concern are merely an attempt to rationalize legislative interference in spite of the constitutional amendment intended to stop it. The authors of this bill attempt to undermine the authority of the Regents and the executive branch, and that makes them untrustworthy. There is no amount of editing that will fix these fundamental flaws. What's more, this hurts. You are causing pain based on no evidence whatsoever. That is despicable. Please stop this process now by voting no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Luke?
Not present, Chair.
Okay, Carly, Carl Poli?
Not present, Chair.
Rosiana Azman?
Aloha, my name is Dr. Nani Azman. I'm a tenured full professor of psychology at U H Mauna College. I'm testifying as an individual in opposition to this bill. My written testimony provided a lesson from the history of psychology about structuralism and functionalism, how I teach it to my students using the analogy of a car, how this all applies to higher education and more specifically this bill. This bill's attempt to micromanage the university and dissolve tenure for community college faculty and university support faculty declares that we are not an important part of the student's educational journey. In two decades as a U H professor, not many of my students have started out on a straight and smooth road. The U H system is factually one of the best in the world. The legislature helped to create and fund this marvel of education that improves thousands of lives every year. Do we value the students that are CCs less so we can jettison parts of their vehicle? Can we afford to tinker with the tenure system that allows faculty across the system to do their parts, getting the students through the rough spots and to their degrees? If our purpose as a university is to educate our students, then we need the university in its entirety to do so. U H has autonomy. If you really care about the people of our state, please trust us to do our jobs, keep our faculty and tenure intact, and oppose S B 3269. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Kane? Eileen Kane, I'm sorry. Eileen Kane?
Good afternoon, senators, and thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Eileen Kane. I have been teaching at Leeward Community College for 20 some years, but I am testifying as an individual, not as representing anyone at the U H. I really love the university. I have been part of it since 1977. And I ask you to please vote against S B 3269 S D one. I think it is a terrible intrusion into our tenure system and our freedom of speech. What's most disturbing about this bill is that it didn't come from within. It came from without. I'm sorry, but one cannot simply say the PIG group was valid at its report. It was not valid. There is no reason for any of this intrusion into the tenure system. And what's more, it destabilizes the workplace. I believe it's an attack on unionism and union membership. It would remove people from the union for no reason at all. There is absolutely no justification for claiming that this is a statewide concern. It's nothing of the kind. So I urge the senators to please vote against this so that we don't have this kind of opportunistic politics where people.
Okay, thank you very much. Sarita Washington?
Not present, Chair.
Okay. Brett Hirata?
Not present, Chair.
Linda Venishiano?
Not present, Chair.
Patricia Bob?
Not present, Chair.
Iomai Lani Kukahiko?
Aloha, Mai Kako. Well, I mostly will stand on my written testimony. I wanted to add that for the College of Education in particular, there's a wide number of us that are also Native Hawaiian, advancing Native Hawaiian issues and education. And this was something that was also brought up in the WASC report that although we are 20% of the university community, we are only 6% of the tenured faculty. And things like this by getting rid of tenure for specialists specifically as outlined in this bill would be kind of a blow to Hawaiian education and to Hawaiians in Hawaii. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. G F Akamine?
Aloha, my name is Glenis F. Kiyoleni Akamine. I'm speaking as an individual who strongly opposes S B 3269. I'm not an elected official, but I have always valued shared governance. It is vital in a healthy community. During a time when there is a need to rebuild public trust in government, S B 3269 is a step in the wrong direction. It continues to breach public trust as this bill usurps the university's right to shared governance. I do not trust that you understand that this bill will work against U H, helping U H to sustain or even grow our enrollment adversely affecting revenue. I do not trust that you understand that this will effectively hobble the university internally, not strengthen it. Please work with us, not against us. I do trust that you view my work as invisible. I work tirelessly. Resources are limited. I wear multiple hats. Specialist faculty come to work with our hearts and our roles, affect student retention, persistence, and recruitment. But to be effective, we need parity. I want a better institution too. If your intent is to make U H a stronger, more efficient, and effective institution, helping Hawaii to be a better place.
Thank you very much. Nadine Wolf?
Okay, not present, Chair. And then the remaining testifiers are actually not present.
All of them?
Correct.
Okay, so. I guess I should read them anyway. Kabika Winter? Monique Michaelnisco? Luina Akiona, Stephanie Sorbitz, Bonnie Manini, Jeffrey Mexia, Michael Harada, Don Viviani, Sterling Foster, Karen Pellegrin, Steve Bussinger, Stephanie Zoo, Christina. Christina Karaparidu? Mancha Dasuppa? Wendy Coats? And that is all those that were signed up for Zoom. We did have members approximately 240 testimonies written in opposition. Okay, members, open to questions. I do want to go back and ask the Chair of the permitted interactive group, the PIG. So Jen Sullivan, are you still with us?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. You know, the testimony continued to... People say that the authors of this measure have no idea as to what is needed at the university or idea what goes on at the university. Can you just tell us who are exactly on the PIG? And give us an idea of, you know, your meetings and so forth? Because again, the authors of this is the members from the interactive group, correct?
Yeah, so I can just summarize. This is in my written testimony as well. I intentionally asked to put together a cross-section on this task group. So we had Ben Kudo as Board Chair. I was Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee. Bob Westerman, Regent Westerman, was Chair of the Personnel Committee. Regent Wilson was Chair of the Academic and Student Affairs Committee. I asked Christian Fern from UPA to serve. We had Bonnie Irwin, Chancellor of a four-year campus. We had Velma Kameoka, who is the Vice Chancellor for Research at Manoa. We had Erica LaCroix, who is the Vice President for Community Colleges. And we had Brennan Morioka, who is the Dean of Manoa College of Engineering. President Lasner was invited to all the meetings, and he was actively participating in discussion and suggestions. The task group unanimously agreed with the recommendations, with the exception of Christian Fern, who submitted written objections to the recommendation.
Did you folks take testimony? And did you hear from people within the university as you met?
We did not. We were acting as a permitted interaction group that was created by the board. And the idea was to submit this to the board and allow the board to put it to public discussion and public hearing. So it was agendized in September, and the reported recommendations were presented. I recommended that it be moved to the full board so that it could be discussed and agendized in a public forum. And the board unanimously agreed to vote on it, to refer it to committee of the whole, to be heard in that manner. To my knowledge to date, the recommendations have not been discussed publicly by the board.
Okay, so the board created the PIG. You folks met for many months, and you had 11 meetings, approximately 11 meetings. And this measure was sent to the Board Committee of the Whole, and the board has never taken it up. Would you... So maybe I should ask Ben Kudo. Mr. Kudo, is there a reason why the board didn't take this up? I guess that's one of the reasons why we were asked to put this measure into a bill, because certainly the board should have taken it up. Mr. Kudo, are you still here?
I think Ben was starting to say... I don't see him here, but I think what he was starting to say was, he was told that this would be delayed until the report to examine and assess university-wide tenure system in response to SCR 201 was made available.
Well, let me... Since we're talking about that, I know it was brought up by UPA that it was ignored. Let me just say that the SCR that was asked for, that we were talking about why the board delayed it, that was due 10 days before the start of the legislative session. And the legislative session was on January 19, I believe. And we did not get the report. In fact, as of early February, we didn't get it. We only recently was posted. When did we get it? Do you know? Yeah. Yeah, I don't know that we officially even been given the report. We got it off of the UH. We had to get it off the UH website. And that didn't come till sometime in this month, February. So it actually missed any deadline for us to put it into a bill. And let me just say, the members that was on the BOR, I mean, on the SCR task group was two Board of Regents members. Let's see, two Board of Regents members, which is the Chair, and I guess Bernie Wilson, the President of the University, the Vice President of Research and Innovation, two members from UPA, and then the Vice President of Academic Programs and Policy. So I guess the PIG was a lot more diverse than this group. And I'm not sure how long they met and how many times they met, because it's not really stated in the report as well. So Jen, let me just ask you, does this measure... I know we introduced it to reflect everything that was in the report, but the SD1 went and made some corrections. One of the corrections, it erroneously said that the board had adopted it, Board of Regents had adopted the report, which they had not done, and that had been corrected. Also, that the community colleges, that for some reason, the category C was not mentioned in the report, and therefore, there are a lot of concerns by the community colleges that emailed saying that they were lumped in with the F faculty, which had to do research, and they didn't do research. So we made that change to keep the C category and keep the tenure for all of the community colleges intact, since that was not made clear in the report. And then the issue of the librarians, which across the country, there are many universities and institutions that tenure librarians and some don't. And so we kept that in. So other than that, do you see that this is dismantling the tenure process?
No, and I just want to clarify that our recommendation for the task group did recommend retaining tenure for librarians. So I'm not sure where all of that discussion is coming from. And I'm a bit surprised by the community college discussion. For some reason, that was never raised by Erica LaCroix. I have no objection personally to that revision. But I do want to note, I have this in my testimony, I don't know if people totally appreciate this, that the way the board is operating now, the board has responsibility for granting tenure. And I do feel strongly, there needs to be policy direction on how we do that. We used to actually act on tenure and promotions every year. We would get lists of hundreds of tenure and promotions to act on and approve formally as a board. I objected to that because we had no idea what we were approving. We had no background on every single individual, how it was being justified, how it was prioritized. I thought it didn't make sense for the board to do this. So the policies were changed to delegate all of that to the president. Now, the problem with that is, we don't have any clear parameters around, you know, how tenure should be granted at a high level. And so part of this was just trying to establish high-level policies that would allow the university to strategically evaluate who it's giving tenure to. The other thing that came up was the whole classification system. And most people, they may not want to say it publicly, but most people and professors that have come from other universities know that university, in particular, Manoa's classification system is like no place else. There are so many alphabets and classifications that have grown over the years. We are not actually following our peer institutions. And so the idea was to retain tenure for instructional faculty, researchers, librarians, but to clarify who should have tenure. That is a really difficult discussion. And where we spent time early on in our task group was going back to why tenure exists in the first place. And if you go back to why tenure exists, it really was created in the early 1900s to protect academic freedom. It was never meant to be just lifetime employment. It was an assurance of academic due process. And I think that is still important today as it was back then. What it has become today is a recruiting tool and something that is important in order to compete with other universities, as well as academic freedom. So it's not an easy balance when deciding what type of positions should be given tenure versus what type of positions belong in another type of unionized employment category. And I would urge you to look at the ATP categories that exist and the type of positions that are in ATP, and how they compare with what we call specialists or other type of positions that are considered faculty-tenured positions.
So the ATP... Go ahead. I'm sorry. The ATP positions was created when there were all these concerns, from what I'm told, concerns about specialists. And as a result, the Board of Regents have on their policy where West Oahu and Hilo are not supposed to have any specialists, and yet somehow they do, and they violate the Regents' policies, and the Regents have not really acted on that. And so it troubles me that that's happening. It troubles me that you say that the Board of Regents had no way of determining who should get tenure and so forth. And yet, we keep hearing from testimony about how, you know, the Board of Regents have the exclusive jurisdiction, and yet, there's all of these conflicts that's going on there. And as the legislature, we do have oversight. We are a statewide legislative body with oversight. And so in cases where there are these issues, I believe that we do have that right to come in and at least assist in how we do this based on the information that we receive from within the university, and in this case, with the PIG that's going on. So can you just talk about the specialists and the ATP positions?
Yeah, I don't know that I'm the best to... I hesitate to say anything incorrect, but all I... What I do know is ATPs are primarily HGA positions. So they do have, you know, the protection and the benefits that come with being part of a union. I don't understand the specialist position and how it's grown over the years and why it continues to be utilized despite board policy.
Okay, members, any questions? For any of our testifiers? Let me just ask one more thing. So everything that was put together, it goes prospective, right? Anybody who has tenure now, they're all grandfathered in despite what position they might have?
Well, that's correct. The recommendation was to only make changes moving forward.
So it wouldn't affect anybody currently that had tenure or is in the tenure track?
That's right. And, you know, I do want to add that as far as the people on the task group goes, the board members that were there, the other participants, even the president, I think everybody felt these were valid issues to address, and that it was time to do something. I don't think anyone disagreed with that, with the exception of Christian. So I don't want to give the impression that the board doesn't want to do anything, because I really felt the members on the board that served on this task group did, and that's why we moved it forward.
And it was four of the 11 board members, right? Yeah.
Yes.
Four of the 11 board members. Okay. So in actuality, the authors of this bill is in fact the members of the PIG. Okay, any other questions, members?
Well, just...
Senator Favela, go ahead.
Yeah, I just... The reason why I was listening to every team chair and and I read a lot of the dialogue going forward. And, you know, you did the best you could on what you had explained, same with Jen Sullivan. But I didn't really appreciate on the within and the without. Yeah, we work hard every day, listening to all of the grapes that comes out from the university. And when we make a stand here as the Senate to try to improve the quality of life of everyone there at the university, and they come in the bad mouth and they say these things, not only in the press, yeah, and how they got influenced to have this false narrative of Chair, yeah? So I just was listening to all of this, and I was reading a lot of documents. So I don't know what they was reading. I didn't understand that. This is going forward. We're not trying to take away anything. But the thing that I want to share out there in the university world, Hawaii, State of Hawaii is the only one that pays for everything, and a taxpayer. The researchers that we talk about, that we're talking about, and the ones that have been talking, they don't bring in 80% of their research fund. Most of the colleges in the mainland does require that. And then with the credit hours that they're about, that they teach. Okay, when we fall apart with all of these kinds of stuff, Chair, I just like them to understand. Okay, so we had a professor, I want to give you guys this one so you guys understand, and then I'm going to yield. We had a professor that went to the University of Hawaii, said that they're going to do a research in Mauna Kea, spent X amount of dollars that was approved. Guess how much times they went to Mauna Kea? Zero. But then we still, as taxpayers, paid for that. That's the kind of imperative that we have at the university that Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kadani, and myself want to oversee because of our tax money. That's all we're doing here. We're not trying to showboat and stick our nose where we know we belong. And anytime it comes to taxpayers' money, we're there. There's a lot, a lot of money that is paying at the university that should not be spent and be paid for by the taxpayers. So I just wanted to thank Senator Kim and Senator Kadani, you know, having the fort to go forward with this bill, because it is Pono, it is good. And the thing about tenure and to my Hawaiian community out there, you guys tenure out there on the University of Hawaii campus. You guys grumble to me how you guys don't have equal share of getting tenure, and all your colleagues on the campuses get tenured before you guys. And then they make you guys come on top of here, say the things you guys said, when they don't even respect you equally on the campus. And then you guys had the wrong information messaging me and saying all of this, how bad this is for the Hawaiian community. I would never do nothing to hurt my Hawaiian community, but please get the facts straight. We did not come up with this bill. The facts were stated by Ms. Jen Sullivan. We just came in, we orchestrated this to try to save going forward the state some funds. So just remember that. When you guys call me and say that we're not getting equal treatment on the University of Hawaii as Hawaiian students or Hawaiian attorneys, and we're not getting tenure as fast as our other colleagues in all the departments, just remember, we was here for you guys. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Senator Favela. Any other comments or questions? If not, we're going to recess. Call back to order, the Committee on Higher Education. We are in decision-making. The recommendation for Senate Bill 3269 is to amend, to add language that it is clear that this measure applies to the new employees going forward. Also, to add, clarify that the classification C for community colleges, that they would retain the tenure status as they have currently, and that we would add any style and non-substantive tax amendments. Any discussion, members? Hearing none, the Chair votes aye. Vice Chair, if you will take the vote?
For Senate Bill 3269, recommendation is to pass...
I'm sorry, one more thing. We have to... I've also recommended that we adopt the... I'm sorry, one more thing. We have to... I'm also recommending that we adopt the SD1, the proposed SD1, plus the amendments that I mentioned. Thank you.
Okay, so Senate Bill 3269, to pass with those amendments. Chair Kim?
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Keith Agarone? Senator Keith Agarone, excused. Senator Wakai?
Reservations.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Measure's adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you, members. Okay, oh, and I'm sorry, for SB 3374, we recommend that we pass as-is.
Senate Bill 3374, to pass unamendment. Chair Kim?
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Keith Agarone, excuse. Senator Wakai?
Yes.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Measure's adopted, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, members. We are adjourned.